I'd like to call the meeting in the Cleveland County Commissioners' Chambers to order tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have a corner?
We do have a corner.
All right, this time I'd like to ask if anybody in the audience would like to come forward and provide the invocation and say the pledge. If you would stand for the pledge.
Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. The grace of the heavenly Father, we love you and we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us today, the opportunity to come here and do the county's business. We thank you for the EMS, police, our military around the world, and we thank you for all the things that they do. We pray that you will give us wisdom tonight to make the decisions that we need to make and that would be in your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Okay, at this time I'd like to recognize any elected officials we have here tonight. If you're an elected official, would you stand and state your name?
Danny White, please, next to the board.
Thank you, Danny. Any veterans here tonight, if you would stand and be recognized?
Yes, I'm only one Johnny Hudson, U.S. Army.
Thank you for your service. Law enforcement, would you be recognized?
Danny, I put veterans off.
Thank you for all you do, sir. And county department heads, if you would stand and tell everybody who you are?
Carrie Nelson, Assistant County Manager, Katie Swanson, Social Services.
Chris Martin.
Margaret Thompson, Deputy County Attorney.
Perry Douglas, Deputy Commissioner.
There we go.
Thank you for all you do. At this time, I'd like to just back up a little bit and talk about veterans again just a little bit. Over the weekend, we were notified that we lost a former county manager and county commissioner, Joe Hendrick. And I've just got a couple of things here I'm going to mention and ask if any of the commissioners would like to say anything about Joe. He was born in Cleveland County in 1927, and he left high school to join the service during World War II, and he served in the Army Air Corps. He came out of the service and went to college and held management positions in Florida and in North Carolina. And after he returned to Shelby, he was county manager and he was county commissioner for two years. And during his tenure, he established the Cleveland County's Economic Development Commission. And he had had a small role, we're told, in NASA, in the space race by developing infrastructure in Cape Canaveral. He was active in First Baptist Church, and he was a mason and a shriner. And we'd just like to let his family know we're thinking about them during this time. Wondered if commissioners had anything else they'd like to say? If not, then before you have this week's agenda, and does anybody want to add or take anything out of the agenda? If not?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? With Penn, thank you very much. We have one special presentation tonight. It is Child Abuse Month, and I'm going to recognize Katie Swanson, our Social Services Director, to come talk about Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Well, hello, thank you for having me tonight, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm glad to be here, and I don't have my staff with me because of COVID, but they're all watching livestream, which they were excited to be able to do. I wanted to just say a few words before we do the proclamation. Child abuse prevention is important every month, but we honor all of the children that we have come in contact with in the month of April. We also work as a team to try and prevent child abuse neglect, dependency. This month, we sent out a lot of letters to our community partners to put pinwheels, blue pinwheels, across the community. Well, it turned out that counties had really snatched those up, and they were out of stock in a lot of places. I heard from many of our community partners that they weren't able to get their hands on those. We also have the Shelby Star doing a article this week, and it should come out talking about child abuse and prevention and the work that Social Services does around child welfare. And so I hope you'll see that throughout the week. I also want to just say that 2021 has been a hard year for child welfare. We've had several vacancies and also some people out of the office for different reasons. And so we've had a big team approach to how we're tackling the multiple reports we're getting. And we've seen a large number of child abuse cases that we don't normally see. And that is because we believe the kind of aftermath of COVID, people not, teachers not seeing children, and multiple people not going to the doctor as often than some of our routine reporters. And so instead of catching things early on, we're finding that things are going further and kids are being hurt in a way that normally doesn't happen in Cleveland County. So I just want to take a moment to honor our staff, who do an amazing job every day, and even this, and this year has been harder than most on them. And we're doing a lot of work to really celebrate them this month as well. So thank you for all the support that you give Social Services, but specifically to the children in this community. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have any comments you'd like to make to Katie about Child Abuse Prevention Month?
Just a comment, appreciate all you do. I know sometime it seems like it goes unthankful, but we appreciate all you and your staff to have protected children in our county.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We do, we do appreciate all you do, and we realize how important that this, this is just one facet of your job, but it is very important for us to be aware and for if you see something, you report it. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the proclamation.
Appreciate you. Child Abuse Prevention Month 2021. Whereas while children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, they are also the most vulnerable members of our society. And whereas the problem of child abuse and neglect affects many of Cleveland County's children and has reached epidemic proportions in North Carolina, with over 81,952 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent last year. And whereas last year, the Cleveland County Department of Social Services had over 1,200 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent. And whereas preventing child abuse neglect is a community responsibility that affects both the current and future quality of life for our community. And whereas effective child abuse strategies succeed because of the partnerships created among individuals and families, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas every child has a right to a safe, healthy, nurturing environment, and community action is needed to help prevent child abuse so all children can have the opportunity to reach their potential. We call upon the community to increase their participation in effort to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and calls upon every citizen to join the child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month and appropriate education and prevention of child abuse. Adopted this the 20th day of April 2021.
And just for significance, 81,000 this year. The year before was 155,000. So that's how much COVID impacted reports coming into across the state.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all you and people.
Thank you.
Now we're down to the consent agenda, is, I mean, I'm sorry, the citizen recognition. Has anybody signed up for citizen?
No, sir, no one signed up.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to call on Brian Epple, the county manager, to present the agenda.
Commissioner Bridges, members of the board, several items on your consent agenda for this evening. We'll begin with item A, which are minutes from your April 6 regular commissioner meeting, and those minutes are in your packet for review and consideration. Item B is your monthly tax report from our Tax Administration Department for March 2021. Very pleased to report total taxes collected 97.66%. That's about eight tenths of a percent higher than this same time last year, which obviously was low compared to historically because of the onset of COVID. Item C, also part of your monthly tax reports, it's your abatement and supplement report for March 2021. Abatements for the month total $4,445.73. Supplements for the month total $36,313.23. Item D is budget amendment number 58 on the year from our Emergency Management Department and requesting to budget $18,753 in an emergency management performance grant. Our staff have successfully completed the criteria to apply for and be rewarded this, and we're requesting to budget it for public safety capital to add to our equipment. Item E is from our Sheriff's Department, and it's a request to retire county asset, which is a K-9, his name is Bandit. The asset number is 201055. This K-9's been on duty now for several years and is retiring because of age. And we're requesting that that retirement be spent with Deputy Steve Benina, who is, I believe, taking care of a few of our retired officers. Item F is from the Planning Department, and this is a request to set a public hearing from May the 4th at your next meeting. That would be to consider case 20-14, which is a request to consider rezoning parcel 5990 from residential to light industrial as a conditional rezoning. Item G is very similar, same petitioner, same request from the Planning Department to set a public hearing from May the 4th. This would be case 20-15, same request, residential to light industrial as a conditional rezoning. And that is parcel number 275A. Tonight's request is simply, again, to set those public hearings. Item H is from our Legal Department, and this is a shell building, stormwater permit. As you are aware, the county has successfully partnered with the City of Shelby for the completion of our third shell building. It's out on Platter Lee Road. And part of that project completion is to align the stormwater review and to be in compliance with the environmental standards that come with that much surface area. And part of that is granting an easement to the City of Shelby so that they can access the property to inspect our retention ponds and all of the stormwater management systems that we've put into place. And that completes a fairly short consent agenda for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, have any discussion, questions for the manager?
No, and if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Is everybody in favor? Raise your hand. Unanimous? Thank you very much, Brian. And then we'll move down to the regular agenda, and for that, I'm going to ask Chris Martin, our senior planner, to talk to us about the comprehensive land use code review.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. I've got a presentation for you tonight to talk a little bit about the land use plan and our code ordinances. And the, the objectives of this presentation are, number one, to review some background and history of countywide zoning. Number two, to discuss some current projects that staff has been working on. And then both of those objectives, hopefully, will achieve the goal of receiving direction from the board for our next steps regarding those projects. Little bit of history. In 1995, Cleveland County adopted our first land use plan. Land use plans are required by the state, North Carolina. The purpose of a land use plan is to provide a vision with goals for land development. And then it also provides or suggests strategies to achieve those goals and serves as a guide for development. Some of the topics that a land use plan typically address are residential development, commercial and industrial development, transportation, utilities, and then it'll have goals and strategies for each of those topics. As I said, in 1995, we adopted our first land use plan. And, and in that plan, it encouraged countywide zoning. And so fast forward five years, the county adopted countywide zoning for the first time. We have been working on with that, with that zoning, with, with that base zoning district now for over 20 years. And then in 2005, the, we, we developed a new land use plan to carry us for the next 10 to 15 years. Lot of change, lot has changed in Cleveland County since 2005. We've, you know, we're in the middle of construction of a bypass. The 2008 recession hit, and you know, the recession affects housing, it affects where and how people work, and it affects transportation, you know, where they're traveling to every day. That O5 plan showed a couple lakes that were proposed at the time that are no longer proposed. We've had a lot of industrial and commercial development since that time, and we've seen some new emerging land uses that has affected a lot of our residential areas since that time. 2015, we felt like that 2005 plan was beginning to become dated due to a lot of those changes I just mentioned. And the board at that time recognized that, and we asked Isothermal Planning and Development to review our land use plan, the O5 plan, and give us an opinion if, if it needed to be updated. And of course, after review, they, they strongly suggested that we update that plan and just start from scratch and build a new plan. Couple years later, 2019, you guys, the board, you made it a priority to develop a new plan and ask staff to begin working on that. A little over a year ago, staff began working with Benchmark Planning and their planning consultant company from Charlotte that specializes in helping counties develop plans. We began working with Benchmark Planning to manage and draft a new land use plan. These projects typically take a year. This one's taken a little longer, had some delays due to COVID, like a lot of, a lot of other projects across the nation in the past year. But we do expect to bring this, the final draft to you in August of this year. In the meantime, past couple years, since we've been working on this new plan, you've also asked staff to review our code, our law, land use law. So the next objective I want to discuss is our current projects and what we're working on for you. As I mentioned, the land use plan, we've engaged with Benchmark Planning. We have already completed and, and, and in the process of interacting with the citizens, we've held a lot of stakeholder interviews, which several of you were a part of. And we've started a series of public input meetings. Thursday night actually will be meeting number two of four. Next steps, after receiving input from the public, will be to work with the steering committee and the Benchmark Planning to draft the land use plan and the, the associated land use maps. And then in August, we'll present that, that material to you for adoption. So the next thing we've been working on, three things actually, three, three projects past couple years, we've, we've worked on solar farms at your request. We developed an ordinance, strengthened standards, strengthened development standards with the goal of having that type of development be more compatible with the neighborhoods that surround it. We altered the zoning districts and the type of permit that they're required. And we've adjusted the fee schedule to, to better, to be more compatible with the time and effort and, and the number of inspections that's required of these types of projects, large-scale projects. That's been completed. The next project are RV parks. We've seen a no, a rise, a significant rise in the number of RP, RV parks over the past couple years. And you asked us to, to develop some standards, because we had none, we had no standards for RV parks. You asked us to develop standards, which we did, and were, those were adopted in February 2020. That, we're calling that Phase One, that set of standards addressed, it addressed compatibility with the areas around it, and it also addressed some safety issues within a park to allow emergency services to access all the sites within a park. Phase Two of that project, we worked on, we've drafted an ordinance that addressed public health, public safety, and fair share cost. We presented that to the Planning Board a couple months ago, and they've denied, they've recommended denial of that draft. And another part to that, what were zoning districts or where can RV parks be located? Our code lists several different types of residential districts, a couple business districts, and a couple of industrial districts. Currently, the ordinance says that RV parks are allowed in most all of them with some sort of permit. This ordinance, or this part of this ordinance would address the location requirements of RV parks and limit them to the business districts. The third project is mobile home park standards. And again, there's development standards within the park that we, the staff can address at your request. And there is also, again, like RV parks, location standards or zoning district allowances that staff can address at your request. So the third part of this presentation is asking for the direction for the, from the board. Got a couple options, and I can, if the board asks me to, or if the board requests me to, I can bounce back and forth at the end. But this screen, or this, this slide gives you options for the zoning districts for both RV parks and mobile home parks. We've got two options for each. Where, you know, one option would be that you could set a public hearing date to consider changing the zoning districts that both RV parks and mobile home parks are allowed in. And then the second option would be to take no action. So that screen and this, this subject matter addresses the location and zoning districts of where they're allowed. And I've got one more screen, one more slide that addresses development standards. And that, you know, I like to think of the zoning districts as the where are they allowed, where, and then the development standards of how they're developed. So you got the where and the how. So this next slide, for both RV parks and mobile home parks, you've got some options for development standards, the how are they developed? With RV parks, you can choose to maintain the first phase, which I mentioned was adopted last year, and to maintain that only. You can choose to set a public hearing and consider the Phase Two that addressed public health, safety, and cost share. Or you can plan a work session with staff to evaluate those standards within that Phase Two. And then with mobile home parks, you've got two options for the development standard side. You can either plan a work session with staff, and it can be within that same work session for RV parks, so we can plan a work session with staff to evaluate the standards, or you can take no action. And that was the last slide, and I can answer any questions, or I can, if you would like, I can go back and revisit those options or answer any, any other questions you may have.
Any, anybody like any discussion, or do you want me to go ahead and start one at a time and keep Chris up here to ask questions?
I would suggest we go back to slide nine.
Is that it?
So Chair and the other commissioners and those in the audience, I think that this is a wise choice from the standpoint of that zoning should, the use should match the zoning classification. And I think both of these match those requirements. For example, general business and neighborhood business matches the RV parks, and then naturally mobile home parks match the residential manufacturer RM classification. So at the appropriate time, I'm prepared to make a series of motions, but I won't do that to stifle discussion if other commissioners have input at this point.
Any other discussion? So you want to go ahead and make a motion?
So I'll make it in two separate, so the first one, I would say under number one, I move that we set a public hearing on May 4th of 2020 to consider updating the table uses, which would place RV parks in general business and neighborhood business. I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Like to, everybody raise your hand if you're in favor. So that passes the first part. And then we need to move to?
So the second motion I'm prepared to make is under number two, that we also set a public hearing date for May 4th of 2021 to consider updating the table of permitted uses to move mobile home parks into the RM or residential manufacturer classification only. I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Everybody in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? So that moves us over to RV parks under development standards. Any discussion there?
So as with slide nine, I think these are very wise, some options upon, under the various actions that we have here, and I'm prepared to make a series of motions as well once we're ready at that point, and again, not to stifle any other discussion from other board members.
Is there any other discussion? Anybody like to ask Chris questions about these before we move on?
So if not on RV parks, to clean things up, so we can transition, take, I make sure that we're positioned the county right with the land use plan and the things that you've heard from Chris's report, and to make sure that it's clean as far as our direction, I move that we first withdraw the petition for the Phase Two ordinance for RV parks. By doing so, this will allow the county to work from the Phase One with the stakeholders and, and take input as we move forward.
Second.
Okay, so, so we got a motion and a second, just to drop that one?
Yeah, be.
Okay.
But to have the work session.
Yeah.
Oh, is that a separate motion?
It is separate, yeah.
Okay, then, then we're voting to?
First, just to simply remove the?
Remove Phase Two ordinance. And we, we got a motion and a second? All in favor of that? Okay, and then?
And then lastly, and suggestions, what's been said is that we plan a work session, our commissioner work session, to evaluate developer standards for both RV parks and mobile home parks, the proper position, the county, and how to handle those emerging issues, and make sure that you're consistent with the land use or the comprehensive land use plan.
Okay, we got a motion and have seconds. And we have a second on that, so all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that gets us down to the last one, mobile home parks. And we need to decide whether to have a work session to?
No, I think you included that, both of those.
Was that?
He included both of those.
Okay, so that's a, so we didn't need a second motion? Okay, so that's a, so we didn't need a second motion for that one.
At least that was the intent, the intent of the motion, the work session.
Okay, if that works, is there any more discussion on this before we thank Chris for all he's done? That's a lot, a lot of work was put into this, and we appreciate it.
Got a good staff that's really carried a load.
Thank you. Okay, now Kerry Milton, our Assistant County Manager, is going to present our 2021 and 2022 strategic plan.
I think actually this presentation flows very well from the last agenda item because it talks about planning and strategic planning and long-range planning. And first, I wanted to begin, thank you for letting me come present to you all tonight. And I first want to say thank you also for devoting really two almost entire days to strategic planning for the county, to giving a guiding document for staff to work from and listening to the citizens and their wants and needs. That was all included in development of the strategic plan, so I thank the board for taking the time to do that. I'm here tonight to really share your, share with the public your prioritization that came out of that two-day work session, and just, again, lots of great things happening in Cleveland County and will continue to happen. I want to start first, we have five focus areas that the board works from, but I want to start with the, kind of the top priorities that came out of the commissioner's work session, with the first being, wait a minute. Excuse me, I'm missing a slide. Can you do it from there? Okay, so I apologize for that. First top priority, volunteer fire strategic plan. As all of you know, the commissioners, five years ago, developed really the first ever volunteer fire strategic plan. That plan does expire, was a five-year plan at the end of this year. And this really has been a guiding document for us. Out of that document came things like full-time paid staff at our fire departments, lower insurance ratings for lots of our properties throughout the county. So what the board has asked us to do is really to update that five-year vision, and also with this plan, to include public safety agencies in Cleveland County. The next of the board's top priorities is really to continue to make Cleveland County government an employer of choice. Employees, the board has made employees of this county a priority. And from that, I believe we've received higher level of customer service. So in the next year, part of the things that staff will be doing is updating the personnel ordinance and bringing that before you, and then continued review of pay and market analysis for our employees. The third priority that the board, top priority that the board came up with was community wellness. For several years, the board has made community wellness a priority. This has stayed on the strategic plan, and it's our goal this year to positively impact community health outcomes. Several of the ways that I think that this can happen is, one big one is really the consolidation of health and DSS. With that, health outcomes, this co-location, because really, community wellness is not just about physical health, but much more than that. So we're excited about the opportunities with co-location of those two departments and things we can make happen under community wellness. The fourth top priority the board was, is workforce development. Accelerate Cleveland, we've held two successful classes of Accelerate Cleveland. We feel very confident under the board's guidance that we'll be able to hold Class Three in 2021. We'll also be evaluating, expanding the program potentially in partnership with the Cleveland County Schools to not only potentially serve those underemployed, but potentially some of our students coming out of high school and encouraging them to go into advanced manufacturing. Also, under workforce development, we have our, continuing our five-year funding ladder with the Cleveland Community College, and we'll use the Advanced Manufacturing Center throughout this year as a continued tool for economic development recruitment. A big, big top priority that came out of the work session was really creation of this public safety campus. As you all know, we've been working on really public safety capital since 2017. We've done several reports, we've done a jail study, two jail studies, a court study to really determine what the best approach is. And the board decided during that meeting that, really, to choose the long-term solution. So we are currently, have two architects we're working with to really develop conceptual drawings for this public safety campus, which would include courthouse, jail, and sheriff's administration. We'll also be working on potential grant opportunities for this project. So now I just want to take a few minutes on each of our other, or each of the five focus areas. Under citizen engagement, the things that the board identified was the housing study, continue to use this as a tool to market the really critical need for housing in Cleveland County. Litter is one. You all listened to the community. We've had lots of community interaction around litter this past year, and I really want to commend the board for taking that and putting it, continuing to put this on their strategic plan. Our plan moving forward is to have a contract vendor that will help with litter pickup, and also it's our intention to roll out an anti-litter prevention in schools this upcoming fiscal year. With community engagement and transparency, I think the board has continued to make that a priority. I think one of the best examples of that is live streaming our meetings. So in this fiscal year, we'll continue to look for opportunities there to be more transparent with our citizens. Under economic development, workforce development, obviously, I've already talked about that. Support ag development, this has been on the strategic goals of the board for a long time also. We most recently submitted a grant application on behalf of one of our local farms, and we'll continue to look for opportunities. We're partnering with the Community College, they did a presentation several weeks ago about some of the new agriculture programs that they have developed, so we'll continue to look for opportunities there. Travel and tourism, again, was a strategic goal of the board under economic development, and it's our intention to do an upgrade, although there's been positive momentum there to update their strategic plan also moving forward. With product development, just wanted to touch on that real quick. In this fiscal year, we'll look for additional opportunities to purchase land and potentially, if we have Shell Three sale, then potentially look for a new Shell building location and move forward with that. Under public safety, I've already addressed volunteer fire strategic plan and the public safety campus. Animal control ordinance, we have a task force created, was difficult, again, like with a lot of other projects in COVID and the time and getting together, but this year it's our goal to go ahead and get that, under the board's direction, get that animal control ordinance updated. With respect to code enforcement, we recently consolidated code enforcement to include solid waste, minimum housing, and zoning, so we will also be evaluating over the next several months whether we actually add another position in that area. In terms of community wellness, I've talked about community health rankings, substance abuse prevention, specifically opioid abuse, has been a serious problem in Cleveland County, so I commend the board for seeing that as a priority. And our Health Department will continue to work, really in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office, also in conjunction with EMS, to look for opportunities to help in that area. Research funding for expansion of trails was a rollover from last year's strategic plan. I think in 2020, we really saw the importance of our trails. We knew they were important, but there were times when really they were the only things open in Cleveland County. So we will continue to work with our grants writers to look for opportunities to expand the trails that we have currently in our county. Under fiscal sustainability, one of the priorities of the board was to CCS Cleveland County Schools Capital Plan, to partner with Cleveland County Schools to develop a long-range capital plan. So we'll be working closely with the school system to see the plan that they have moving forward with respect to capital. With respect to county capital, under the Facility Master Plan, as you all know, during the work session, we presented an updated Facility Master Plan to all of you, and it's our intention, again, since it's on the strategic plan, to continue implementation of that plan. With respect to lean organization, the board has asked staff to really continue to look for efficiencies in the organization through processes such as position justification and other areas, so we will certainly focus on continuing to be a lean organization that our citizens can be proud of. During your work session, we also talked a lot about capital projects. I think we have a very aggressive capital project plan for this upcoming fiscal year. I've listed most of the, all of those projects on here. The Board of Elections, as some of you may have known, we did burn the property on Morgan Street this past weekend, so we are moving forward with that project. We currently are working on a grant application with a consultant on a new 911 EOC facility over at the existing Red Cross site. I talked about the Justice Campus. The county has requested a public defender's office in our county, and if that does happen, we're prepared to find a location for those, for the public defender's office, should that be approved. The shooting complex expansion is currently underway and is expected to open in May of 2021. And last week, you heard from Tommy McNeely, last meeting, excuse me, about a new exciting EMS base that's going to be located in Kazer that should be up and running early this summer. I just wanted to take a minute to kind of, I know you can't read this, but this is our kind of guiding document that we're using for our capital projects. So I do want to share that we take a team-based approach to everything that we do, and you'll see by our graph here and our flow chart, really, that the development team is not just one person, but several people from several different departments. So this will be the guiding document that we use really for years to come. Some of these projects will take several years to actually come to fruition, but... We plan on posting, in your packet, you had a letter that County Manager Brian Epley had given you earlier that reviewed all the information from the work session, and also the actual strategic plan, kind of in a document that we can put onto our website. So tomorrow, we'll put that up so we can share with the public. We talk a lot about it amongst the staff, that this is kind of the guiding document for Cleveland County employees, so we'll also share that with the staff. Any questions that you have?
Any comments or questions for Kerry?
It's your plan, so I appreciate you all taking the time.
It's a lot of work, and we appreciate all y'all have done to put it all together. We may have come up with some of these ideas, but y'all are going to put them into practice, and we appreciate it very much.
We appreciate you.
And COVID this year, it's just been, it's been a job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe we have some board appointments, Phyllis?
We have one for tonight. The Cleveland County Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Board, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint one person to serve a two-year term expiring July 1st, 2023.
I make a motion, we appoint Elaine Collins?
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay. That gets us down to Commissioner Reports. You want me to ask? I mean, is it? Johnny just pointed out that he was wondering if anybody had meant to sign up for public comments and did not. And we had, several weeks ago, we had somebody come, and she said, "I wanted to talk," but she didn't realize, sign up, that you had to sign up. Was there anybody here that was planning to speak that didn't get to because they didn't sign up? Okay, all right, all right, now we'll go to Commissioner Comments.
I don't know that I have anything other than just, I would like to commend staff and thank them for all the hard work. There's very many projects going on currently, and that we spent a lot of time together. And Brian, to you and Kerry and all your staff, Phyllis, thank you guys for all, and everyone else, I don't want to leave anyone else, but thank you all for all that you do, because I know it takes a lot of time and effort to research the things, and we constantly ask you guys to prepare for us.
Well, let's see, I've had a few meetings. I'm on the advisory board with DSS now, which I'm excited about. As many of y'all know, I like to be the voice of the ones with their voice, so this kind of ties with my passion. And I also went to the Airport Advisory Board and found out that their economic impact is like 52 million. I had no clue. They are working on Tea Hangar Number Four, I believe, and they have over 25 applicants waiting, and I think it holds 10, maybe, is that right? So, and they just completed one, it wasn't long before COVID hit, so very, very good things going on.
It's nice to have those really expensive airplanes over there because we get, that adds to the tax base.
There you go, yeah.
At several meetings, you know, during the month, you know, the MPO met, we haven't got anything major going on in Cleveland County except the bypass is still on schedule. And so, on the east side, there, somewhere around Bethlehem, they already look like the asbestos, whatever, in the houses they bought, they're tearing it down, so they're probably getting ready to start some kind of construction in that area. Okay, as far as the gun range, we're moving on real well, like you said, in May it'll open up. One good thing about it, that while I'm here, it steps up the band with the money, so it doesn't take a whole lot of tax dollars to increase it. Right now, the participation of the gun range is quite great. Slacked off a little bit due to no ammunition. Find ammunition, it cost us the highest, so it has affected us, but I think the range director has worked something out with the county manager and been able to acquire some ammunition if you're going to shoot it on the gun range, to work something out there. So the college board met, manufacturing facility is well underway, back on Main Street, you can see where they're working on it. I think the softball field, baseball field is under construction, so the colleges move along pretty good. And like Chris Martin said, Thursday night, we've got the street, the land use plan, public meeting, so anyone interested in some of the zoning issues should show up for that meeting. It's at the Grand Center at 6 o'clock.
It is, the Grand Center, 6 o'clock. The topic will be economic development, trends of that topic.
And two, we've, for economic development, we've got a meeting coming up next week, isn't it, Brian?
Yes, sir.
And I think that Monday has good news after then.
Sure hope so.
Last Tuesday night, I attended the Board of Health meeting, and you probably noticed that we didn't have anybody doing reports tonight. That's because we're doing so great. We're below, or right at 3% positive rate, and the state is still about 6%, so we're doing, we're doing really, really good with that. This, and tomorrow, the Cleveland County Commission for Women, if you know any lady... If you know any lady that would like to be part of that commission, you know, we continually add people and people rotate on and off, but one of the things they do is once a year in August, they have a banquet to recognize women in the county that have submitted or has worked for the camp, for women's issues for a long time. So, between now and June, if you know a lady that has worked in the county and has done a lot of good for the women's issues in the county and you'd like to nominate them, let me know and I'll get you a nomination for them because we're always looking for those outstanding women. And usually we do up to three, so if you know anybody, it'd be good. The next thing I'd like to say is we've talked about a lot of stuff. Carrie covered lots of things that we've got going on now. It's probably more than I've seen at any one time since I've been on the board. But the thing I'm excited about is all this is going to take a ton of work and it's going to take some creative financing to make all this happen. But once we get through what we've got projected in our plans now, our county will be set up for 35 to 50 years with no major capital improvements again. So, I mean, we're aggressively doing something that's going to be great for Cleveland County and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ronnie. And Ronnie was talking about the Health Board and the vaccines and we're doing so well. I think we're doing so well, getting close to our herd immunity, that to the best of my knowledge, we're going to have a Cleveland County Fair this year and we're going to have an American Legion World Series and a lot of the public's been asking about that, so I think we're safe to say we're going to be able to do both of those. And I do have one question. If we're going to have two public hearings next time, are we going to have our meeting here? Because this is what this says.
Yeah, I would imagine that they're here.
Okay, all right. Well, then the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, May the 4th at 6:00 PM in the Commissioners' Chamber and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.